Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. It's nice to have so many people in the chamber with us. Today is September 27, 2018, and it looks like we're starting at about 6:05. Thank you again for being here, and I'm going to ask Madam Clerk, can you please give us a roll call?
Councilmember Overton?
Here.
Councilmember Kramer?
Here.
Councilmember Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Here.
Mayor Sabatier?
Here. Councilmember Kramer, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Chuck Young, if you can please step up to the podium for invocation? Chuck Young is not here. So if you could please all stand, we're going to take a moment of silence. We've had a loss that has touched our police department, or a couple of losses that touched our police department, and we would just like to think of them and of the wonderful actions that they've taken to help our community be a better community. Thank you very much, and I would like to offer Nick Bennett the chance to please speak on this.
The two members we recently lost in our department was first Wanda Selly, who was our chaplain, she's also known as a minister in South County, Clear Lake and Lower Lake. Wanda is the, and I don't use the word step or half in my family, so we'll call her a bonus mom to Lieutenant Selly, and a great-grandmother to their children. Wanda was an inspiration to the department. I've known her since I've been here, mid-nineties. Her and her husband Ken were very active in our community. Ken was a businessman, is, was, he's retired now, not in the best of health, so I would like to remember Wanda, our department chaplain, and a great inspiration to us. The second person is Fred Goll. Fred was a member of the original Community Patrol, which morphed into the VIPs we have now. He's always been a loyal member of our organization. As a VIP and Community Patrol, I've known Fred to be out there and pouring down storms at 3:00 in the morning directing traffic in a heinous accident, protecting crime scenes we had that all of our VIPs do maybe while either for crowd control so people don't come in, or while securing a property while we obtain search warrants in the course of investigation. Fred was just an incredible individual. His wife is still a member of our VIPs, I understand, I hope, and was extremely important in the YANA program. You Are Not Alone that kept contact with the seniors. So they are both sorely missed and still loved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank the large team of volunteers that are standing before us. A lot of times, we're looked upon as those on the dais as the leaders of the community, but we make decisions and many others take the action, make the actions happen themselves, and that's what our volunteers do. That's what our team does. We are so thankful for all the work that you do for all of us. Our police department would not be the police department that it is if it wasn't for all of your kindness, your passion, and your dedication to our city. And I wanted to make sure tonight that not only do we remember every single one of you, but that we shared our appreciation for what it is that you do for us. So thank you again. Thank you for being here and sharing this moment with us. Really appreciate that. And next, we're going to ask Mr. Folsom if there are any changes to the agenda.
No, Mr. Mayor, not tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Jones, any announcements for more closed session?
Just that there's no reportable action from closed session.
Okay. And then we're going to move on to presentations. First presentation to the council by the Park Study Club of a gift certificate to use the Park Study Clubhouse for an off-site retreat. Thank you for being here tonight.
My pleasure. I'm Cheryl Ammon, I'm representing our President Deidre Lang, and then I have two Park Study Club members here with me to help me make these presentations. We actually have five of them. I see four of the people in the audience, but I think it's really important, we are known for our flag that we give to the city for Austin Park. We also have been doing scholarships. We've created a new one this year, which we have awarded for volunteerism. And the young lady not only has volunteered for a number of years, who just graduated from high school, but she brought in her peers and in the last couple of years inspired them to a higher level of volunteerism. So that's a new piece that we're adding. The other piece is our certificates, and we're happy to include a number of people, and we have several of them here, that we would like to not only share with Greg, who just took off on us, here he comes.
He had a phone malfunction.
A phone malfunction, okay. So what I'm going to do is I'm going to ask that the people join us, and Greg, you're the first one to come up, if you will, and while you're here, I'm going to read just what's on all of them, and then I'm going to have you stay and we'll have everybody else join us as well. All the certificates are the same, and what they are is they're good for one four-hour event at the Park Study Clubhouse. It's at 13687 Santa Clara Avenue over in the park. It is for appreciation of your role in the community, your support in ongoing efforts, and we hope that this certificate will allow you to plan and move forward as you go back because she's going to give them all out. But you get to stand here because usually you're out there, so you stay with me. All right. So in addition, in addition to the city of Clear Lake, I also want to recognize Citizens Caring for Clear Lake. Barbara Christwick is going to come up and take care of that one as a steering committee lead. I'm not seeing, okay, the next one, all right. Brock Follenberg, come on on up. He's the superintendent of schools, superintendent of Schools for Lake County Education. Then there is Phyllis Hoffman, and she is Toastmasters Club president. So you want to hand these out, and we will, wait a minute, let me just take one out. Take photos.
I'm Greg, so thank you.
Thank you very much. Citizens Caring for our city. No, no, you've got two there. Do I have two? Maybe we can get one.
I was trying to give it back. Really?
For the Toastmasters Club. Thank you very much for this. So what we have is a club that seats approximately 75 people, and they get to have an event, a meeting, a mixer, something that will help facilitate their programs going forward, and we hope that this is the beginning of something we continue to do. We'll see how it works out. So there's an email address for you to write to us, but we have a few obligations with the fire department to fix first, but then we'll be up and running, but you can start scheduling any time. So with that... Would you please kind of close in a little bit? I'm going to go over here, like you're all on speaking terms? Excellent. Thank you all so much. Beautiful. Thank you.
And please remain standing so that Vice Mayor Harris can pass out our pens. Thank you very much, Park Study Club. We do appreciate everything you do for our community. I know from the perspective of education, your scholarships help our students achieve their educational goals, and every day, including from my house, I get to watch the beautiful flag that flies over our park in Austin Park, and we really appreciate what you do and how you interact also with our community with your events. So thank you again. So I don't see anybody other than...
Chief White.
Chief White's going to have to come up for this one. Today we are, this microphone doesn't quite work for me, today we're going to be celebrating something that at one point in our city we did not have. Due to budget cuts from the 2008 market crash, we had to unfortunately get rid of our code enforcement. I believe that was 2009 that this happened. It wasn't until about 2014 that we finally got our code enforcement back in full swing. The compliance rate that we're seeing in our community is increasing, the cleanliness of our city is enhancing, and we're starting to see a visual change in our community. Code enforcement is vital to one of our main goals in this city, which is to have a cleaner city, including also a safer city. So please, every time you see something that shouldn't be there, make sure to contact our code enforcement because we need to make sure to continue the work that they've been doing. So today is, or the second week of October is going to be Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas, the state of California has proclaimed the second week of October as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week. Whereas, code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of citizens of the city of Clear Lake through the enforcement of local, state, and federal laws and ordinances dealing with various issues of building, zoning, housing, animal control, environmental, health, and life safety. Whereas, code enforcement officers have challenging and demanding roles and often do not receive recognition for the job they do in improving quality of life for residents and businesses of local communities. Whereas, the role of many code enforcement officers has expanded in recent years with jurisdictions increasingly relying on the expertise and training of code enforcement officers in their communities. Whereas, code enforcement officers are dedicated, highly qualified, and highly trained professionals who share the goals of preventing neighborhood deterioration, enhancing communities, ensuring safety, and preserving property values through knowledge, training, and application of housing, zoning, and nuisance laws. Whereas, code enforcement officers often have a highly visible role in city of Clear Lake and regularly interact with the public and a variety of federal, state, county, and local officials in their capacity as code enforcement officers. Whereas, the city of Clear Lake wants to recognize and honor the code enforcement officers that serve our community and acknowledge their role in leading the way to improve quality of life within our community. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that...
[laughter]
Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Clear Lake hereby proclaims the second week of October in 2018 be known as Code Enforcement Officer Appreciation Week in the city of Clear Lake, and that the City Council calls upon Clear Lake residents to join in recognizing and expressing their appreciation for the dedication and service by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers dated this 27th day of October 2018. Thank you to our code enforcement team. And Chief White, if you would like to say some words about code enforcement.
I'll just be brief. I didn't ask them to come tonight because if you've been to some of the last few meetings, they've been coming about every single time to levy special assessments and stuff as they work to clean up the community. I don't take responsibility for their efforts because they're very hardworking, but I am glad to be part of the team that supports them, and I look forward to seeing what they can do in the near future as we all work together. So thanks.
Had to bring my agenda to make sure I was on the right presentation. Mr. Carl Webb, if you can please come to the front, and Dirk Sloten, if you could come So today, we invite Carl Webb for a very specific reason. It was a very sad day when we received his resignation letter. He has been on the Planning Commission for, I don't know, it's written somewhere, I want to say 17 years.
Between 17 and 18.
17 and 18 years. His dedication to our city, to ensure that we are growing, that we are growing correctly, and the dedication outside in Rotary, the dedication outside when he was a deputy for the sheriff, is an amazing resume of activities that he has given himself to the city of Clear Lake for the betterment of this city. I can't thank you enough for your service. I can't thank you enough for your encouragement to make things better in our city. I know we've sat side by side as we tried again and again to pass measures that unfortunately did not always pass, but we finally got one. And also, I believe you were a staunch supporter of Measure P to ensure that our police officers receive the right amount of officers to help our city be safe. I'm going to pass this on to Dirk Sloten, who has been the chair of our Planning Commission as of late, but he was also a really good friend of Carl Webb, so he can say our final words as we say thank you to Mr. Carl Webb.
Good afternoon, oh, good evening, everybody. It's been about six years ago when I stopped by Carl's house. I was kind of new in the city, and he took me in. This guy is Mr. Clear Lake, as far as I'm concerned. He's worked for 17, 16, 18 years on the Planning Commission. He's always been an integral part of the role of the Planning Commission for the city, and he served on the Planning Commission where, when he first, as Chair Kurt, Vice Chair Subir, Bob Gordon, and Guy Smith, Bob Maggiore was the mayor at the time, and Joe Bennett, and Jim McMurray, and Sam Sanchez were all councilmembers at that time, if my research is correctly. It's my honor that the city has given you this plaque that you're going to receive shortly, and you'll be sorely missed at the Planning Commission.
Thank you. I'm going to miss the people I've worked with too, because so many that serve in the council and the commission, as well as the folks picking up trash on the street.
Carl, would you like to use the microphone? You'd have to come back.
Is that better?
Yes.
Yeah. It's been a real honor to be able to work with these folks. So many of them, just their heart is in Clear Lake, and it's been really wonderful to be able to be with them side by side. A lot of things that we've tried to do succeeded, a lot of things we tried to do did not, and I'm sure that those that come before, after me will continue to do the same type of thing, and hopefully, they can be very, more successful than we were. Thank you very much.
Don't leave quite yet. So I will actually read our proclamation. This is a proclamation recognizing Carl Webb and honoring him for 18 years of outstanding service to the city of Clear Lake. Whereas, Carl Webb has served as a planning commissioner from December 2000 to June 2018. Whereas, Carl has been a valued and respected member of the Planning Commission throughout his term. Whereas, Carl has conscientiously executed the duties associated with his position. Whereas, Carl's public service as a planning commissioner has had a positive effect on the city of Clear Lake. And whereas, Carl's contributions to the Planning Commission has set this community in a positive direction for years to come. Whereas, the Planning Commissioners, City Council, and city staff wish to express their appreciation to Carl Webb for his dedication and efforts to let Carl know that he will be greatly missed. Now therefore, the City Council of the city of Clear Lake does hereby recognize Carl Webb for his outstanding service to the city of Clear Lake and wish Carl good fortune and happiness dated this 27th day of September 2018.
Thank you.
Hold on. Step in front for this. Carl, thank you so much for your dedication and being part of the pendulum swing to make our city become a positive future.
And one of the group of people I didn't mention long ago that has really been wonderful to work with is the staff. We've had some great staff people working here, and I don't want to leave them out of the mix here.
Absolutely.
But thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody who is here to receive a certificate for Native American Day proclamation, please Thank you for coming tonight. Just earlier, I was at the college, we were celebrating Native American Day as well, and I'll speak a little bit more on that, but today is an important day. We live in a place with so much history and so much heritage, and for us to dedicate, September 28, I believe it is, yes it is, as Native American Day in celebration here in Clear Lake, I think speaks volume of how we are embracing our heritage and our past. Just always want to mention, and I always want to thank Councilmember Nick Bennett for doing this. Nick Bennett brought, when we were reviewing our logo, to ensure to add Native American heritage into our new logo that we designed. You can now see this new logo, bright and beautiful on Lakeshore Drive and Highway 53, and what you will see is a tulip boat in the lake, and I think that is a great addition to ensure that we remember our heritage and remember our past. Native American Day, September 28, 2018. Whereas, as the first Americans, Native Americans have helped shape the future of the United States through every turn of our history. Whereas, the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today. Whereas, their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, California, and Lake County. Whereas, Native American Day began in 1968, and recognition was expanded by Governor Brown in September 2014, designating the fourth Friday of every September Native American Day. And whereas, in honor of Native American Day, community celebrations, as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities take place. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city of Clear Lake does hereby designate September 28, 2018 as Native American Day, and urge all our citizens to recognize the contributions of Native American people and the rich history of the Native American people in California dated this 27th day of September 2018.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Augustine Garcia. I'm the tribal chairman for the Laimingin Colony. I represent two tribes located here in Lake County. As I just said, Sulfur Bank, Ori Laim, and then my grandmother's also from the Big Valley Tribe up in Lakeport. So it's an honor, you know. I grew up here until I was about 13 years old, and then my family relocated to Calistoga. But, you know, even though they recognized California Indian Day in 1968 as a child growing up here, I never saw my community represented. I never saw anything that I can look up to or be proud of, you know, about my culture. So I think that this is a great honor, and it's a step in the right direction to help lift the stigma that's associated with being Native American. I travel quite frequently for work, and, you know, I meet people all the time at airports and stuff, and they'll ask me where I'm from, and I'll say, you know, I'm originally from Lake County, but I grew up in Calistoga, and I'll, you know, let them know that I'm Native American, and they are just astounded that there are California Indians. They just don't believe it. They're like, I didn't know there were Indians in Calistoga, I mean, California. And it's kind of hurtful, you know, to think that people don't know the history, don't know about the indigenous people of this area. So, you know, like I said, I think that this is a huge step in honoring all the local six tribes and everybody from this area. We're very proud to be here. We're still here. We'll continue to be here, and like I said, I'm just, I'm very pleased with this for all indigenous people. So, thank you.
And just one last comment. We need to also notice and recognize that in this county, starting in January 2019, this is also based on the conversations had over at the college for our celebration of Native American Day. Nowhere else in the nation has there ever been two Native Americans representing the county that they live in, ever. And this is an amazing change, an amazing difference that we will hopefully get to see starting January 2019. So I think that we have taken great strides and great steps to make changes here. Mr. Mayor, I'd request that our volunteers be excused, they're being very patient, but we need them to come back to work tomorrow. Thank you so much all for coming. We'll take a two-minute break so that we can go ahead and reorganize.
Taking a two-minute break?
Two minutes.
Two minutes?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. A minute and 50 seconds now. Russ, just go.
I think I don't have to go somewhere.
Wait, wait, wait.
We can, we can hold the meeting up for you. So on number 14, I believe it is, the LAFCO, you want to share? Here, let me set up my computer, and you can just take this.
That's okay. There's usually one in my box, but it was missing.
Maybe I stole it from your box.
Maybe you did.
I think I got it. This one, right here. I'm going to have to excuse myself because I'm on LAFCO, and I've already signed the agreement from LAFCO, and so it would be weird to have my saying yes from LAFCO, signing this one after the meeting is over. I'm going to recuse myself during that point so I can take over the meeting.
You're going to announce while you're recusing?
Yes.
I think I can handle that, bud.
I think you can. Just wanted to make sure it wasn't dropped on you on the, on the spot.
That's all right.
On your desk, is that okay?
Not yet, friend.
It'll all be.
Me too. Got up early this morning. I think I got up about 5-ish.
You too. I had my alarm set for 5:45, and I woke up a little after 5:00.
Same thing. I just popped up this morning.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. So you got everything in there? Did they? Did you get the dryer vent in? All right, man. Hey, you guys be really safe coming back. I appreciate what you do for me. And it's a long day. You guys are, you guys are in a double time now, I'd assume. It's okay. It's okay, we got, hey, we got the, we got the money in the drawer. Give you a check. That's okay. That's okay, it's fine. I just want to make sure you got money. No, we're good. All right. Perfect, all right. All right, thank you guys very, very much. I very much appreciate your efforts. Be safe, be safe. All right, hey, if you, well, you guys are probably going to be rushing to get home. It's awful late for dinner. If you guys want to stop and get dinner, just go ahead and take it on the couple. All right, thank you. All right, bye.
About the longest two minutes I've ever.
Sure on the road. I got things to do.
It's a long two minutes, isn't it?
I'm telling you.
I tried to call you the other day.
Yeah, I was.
It's terrible.
Because I left a message.
I've had so much stuff in my life. I go out and I do my show. I don't even know.
I do it too.
I have my own way.
What the hell was it I called you for?
You know, it's scary too, is I've noticed that like as soon as I broke the 40 mark, that's happening way more to me. When you go into a room, you look around.
I literally went through like a month that I thought, am I getting dementia because I'm totally? I really felt like I was getting dementia. I couldn't remember whether I paid the bills or not. Went to ones I thought I didn't pay. I paid the ones I thought I paid.
I want to say yes.
I've already, it happened where the next month comes and it says I have a credit.
It's good twice in one month, but I can't play Twitter now.
Well, I'm just gonna start having everything automatically taken out of the room.
Decompress everything?
And I'm starting early.
All right, everybody. We'll come back into session, except that I lost everything that I'm, my organization. I believe we're on the public comment portion. Let me just check and make sure.
Correct.
Yes. Thank you very much for helping me out. All these papers. So I have a couple of public comment entries. And we're gonna start first with William Marks. And this is Measure V regarding waste. Thank you very much, William, for coming tonight. There's always a time for firsts.
I had a walk on August, on August 22nd, last month. My routine walk that I always do, down Second Street, Modoc and Second Street there. And directly across the street, 3109, Second Street, there was a flagman, city worker. And I just asked him what they were doing, you know, casually. And he didn't answer, didn't think he heard me. Asked him again, and he said he didn't know. He really said he didn't know. There was another worker down, down yonder at the start of the vacant lot. And I asked him too. And he said that he has only been there for two weeks, and he didn't know either. So no one knew what they were doing. There was another guy out on a grader. And way out in the field, almost around the corner. I have it on my phone. It's the only way I have it here, what I'm talking about, across the street from that address. But I didn't take the time to go way out there to him. I just went back, got my camera, and I took a picture of the license plate of the city truck. They didn't like that. They really got perturbed at that. You know, I went back home. I've tried to get a copy of what the planning was last month, in August. I've been stonewalled. No one knows how to do it. I've asked three different times. I've notified certain people, you, Mr. Mayor of one, about this. Never got an answer. There's enough asphalt there that someone poured out and actually made a road to nowhere, right off that road, to do an entire intersection. And no one wanted to tell me what they were doing that day. And that really bothers me. Two city workers don't even know what they're doing, yet they're working. I don't get it. So I just thought, since I gave you the address of this, and I have your business cards, and now that I've let you know, I'll be emailing you this video, so you can take a look at it for yourself, to this road to nowhere. And I'm just really, really concerned about, why didn't they tell me? You know, that just really bugs me. They should know what they're doing there. Thank you very much. Have a nice evening.
You too. Thank you very much. Next, I have Barbara Kreiswitz. New road behind Pomos School, how to prevent camping.
Or dumping, anyway. So, so anyway, it's really good news that, that, and I think it was Measure V funds, have been responsible for making, making a real thoroughfare that's parallel to Arrowhead. It's, it's over by Pomos School, and it's so that the buses can, can go all the way around. So that's the good news. And, and I think what, what I want to do is talk about preventative measures because there are no houses back there, and it's like a highway for dumpers. And in fact, right after the road was, was made here about two weeks ago, there was a toxic dump, and it smelled for about two city blocks, and people had, and they had to clean it up. It still smells. I don't know. It smells like benzene or something like that. So, so anyway, and, and I'm thinking, well, before that this road got opened up, there were burms, big burms, and it prevented dumping. So now, obviously, you know, it's opened up. And I'm thinking, since it was, since it was closed all those years, that it would be legal to close it at least at night. I'm not sure how to, I, I'm just thinking that might be something to strategize, how to, how to gate it or something at, after sundown. Or, I'm not, I'm not even sure how that would be, but to have some preventative measures for that. So it would be, I think, it would save the city some money in the long run. Because otherwise, they'll be dumping, and Public Works will be going out there to clean it up so the buses can get through. That's my prediction there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on any, on anything that is not on our agenda today? And again, just want to remind everybody that we can't respond to you, since this is not agendized, but we can listen. And if you'd like to wait till after the meeting, then we can speak to you personally.
Board members, my name is Theodore, or Ted Kochel. That's K-O-C-H-E-L. And I live at 3834 Oakmont Drive, and in the city of Clearlake. And I'm here this evening to maybe get some help from the city council as to the possibility of maybe putting our, from the park post office, out past that, past the Goose Neck, and put us on the county. And take us off of the city, city agenda, and put us on, annex us to the county. Because we cannot get any help out there. I've lived here for 22 years, and I feel like an orphan out there. I don't know how the rest of the community feels, because I haven't asked them. But I know as myself, I feel like an orphan out there. We cannot get bus service. We have no bus service past the Goose Neck. And it seems like the Goose Neck is the little, the secret word here in the city. If you live past the Goose Neck, you're nada. You're zilch. You're nothing. And I can tell you that our roads out there are absolutely horrible. They're just terrible. We have pitfalls and everything else. I'm all over the road trying to get home in a safe manner where I don't have to fall into one of the pitfalls. Now, I've always had pretty good luck with the city. I would go in, and I would fail out of form in the city hall over here. And within a week or two, I, we would get the holes fixed up. I did it a few weeks ago, or I guess it's been probably a month. Time goes so quickly for me. But I went in and failed out of form and told them that we needed the holes fixed out there. At least, we need a new road. That's what we really need. But at least get the pitfalls filled up, so we don't ruin our cars getting home and into town. So, anyway, it's, maybe you can give me some information as to what we can do to clear up that. Like I say, I did want to mention the bus deal. We need bus transportation out there. We have a number of seniors out there on Oakmont Drive, and Oak Drive, and so forth, where we need a bus. I am still fortunate that I can still drive, and my wife can still drive. So we're very fortunate in that fact. But I know that there are seniors out there that cannot drive and have no means into town unless a kindly neighbor gives them a hand and helps them. So, anyway, it's food for thought. That's what I'm here for tonight. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to make a public comment? All right, we will close public comment and move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone from the council wish to pull an item to discuss further? Seeing none, does anybody from the public wish to pull an item for further discussion? Okay, I'm bringing it back for council action. Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris, a second by Councilmember Overton. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving forward. Motion carries. We're moving on to business. Item number 13. And I will be removing myself, recusing myself from item number 13, as I am on Lafco, and I am the chair of Lafco, and have already dealt with this matter. So I will move away until I am called back on.
Item 13, discussion of possible approval of agreement between the city of Clearlake and the Lake Agency Formation Commission for the City Finance Services. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. I would like to introduce Alan Flora, our Assistant City Manager, for this item.
Vice Mayor Harris, and members of the council. So, I guess a few weeks ago, I believe, the executive director of the Lake Lafco approached the city manager about the possibility of handling the financial and accounting services for Lafco. So, as your council, I'm sure is aware, Lafco's a commission that makes land use decisions, annexations, and studies the service areas of both the municipalities and special districts within the county. It has representatives from county elected board, elected city council members, as well as boards from special districts make that up. And so they do have a contracted executive director that acts as staff for Lafco. But historically, all of the accounting, treasury, and financial services required for them cutting checks and paying folks has been handled by the county. And at this point, I guess they're interested in the possibility of having the city of Clearlake assume that responsibility on their behalf. They pay the county $2,500 a year. That's what they're proposing, that they would pay the city of Clearlake. And as you can see, they approved an agreement. What was that, last week? And so that's, that's attached as part of this item. We feel like it wouldn't be a lot of additional work for us to do that. It's as similar to the services that we currently provide for PEG TV. The city of Clearlake acts as the financial and accounting arm, handles their funds. And so we would handle it in a similar manner. And if it's the council's wishes, we're prepared to assume those responsibilities. I did have the county auditor contact me this week. And in, in looking at the documents that were approved by Lafco, there's a couple of conflicting dates in there about when a transition would happen. One area, it refers to September 19th, which is when Lafco took action. One area refers to the county handling things through October. And so in having discussions and being able to transition funds and make sure that the bills get paid, we feel like that a transition at the end of October would be the best time to work. The council was willing to let city staff handle these responsibilities. Other than that, I'm just prepared to hopefully address any questions you may have.
You trailed, you trailed off there a little bit. What, what date in October did you say?
Just the end of October, yeah.
Should we, if, in moving forward with the recommended action, if we were to approve, should we approve with the caveat that October 31st would be our?
I believe that would be the clearest way to handle it, yeah.
If I can open this up to the public for any comments?
I, I heard the proposal, but I didn't hear the why.
Not sure I'm 100% clear on why Lafco's looking to do this. Perhaps it's something that Mayor Sabatier could, could address. But they just approached the city and wanted to know if we'd be interested in doing it. I think they, they know that we do the PEG, and they think that we handle it efficiently, so.
Our reputation precedes us. All right, anybody else from the general public? Not seeing any. I'll bring it back to council for the deliberation. All right. Oh, I got a comment.
I have some questions.
Okay, questions?
Okay, on the resolution that they passed at the bottom where it says, whereas on September 18th, or 19th, 2018, Lafco passed their resolution. But then underneath that, it says, whereas this resolution shall become effective on July 1st, 2017. So I think we have some errors in there.
Yeah, I think there's a few inconsistencies.
So they need to correct their errors. Yeah, I sat on Lafco, and yeah, it's just, I, I think they have a better rapport. It's easier for them to come into a smaller area and do business. I think it's not that much. And I think they just like, they like doing business with the city too, so. It's just a smaller, they don't have to go through this big, huge process at the county. It's a, you know, to get in, even into the buildingless space, it is not as easy as ours. So, and they just don't have that much, basically paying the director and a few other little things. It's not that much here. So I'm definitely all, if you, if you're willing to handle it, then, you know, I think it's, it'll be good for them.
Thank you, Council, Councilmember Overton, Councilmember, and you have, you'd like to? Councilmember Kramer, you'd like to take action?
Yes, I would.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the agreement as amended as to the dates between the city of Clearlake and the Lake Local Agency Formation Commission for City Finance Services, and authorize the vice mayor to sign the agreement as amended.
Second.
And do we require a roll call vote on this section? Okay, if I can get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
With Mayor Sabatier abstaining.
And we'll take a minute to wait for our mayor to rejoin us. Thank you for calling me back in. And we are going to move on to item number 14, consideration of extending a moratorium on the establishment of tobacco retailing businesses, smoke shops, or hookah or vapor lounges within the city of Clear Lake, ordinance number 2013, 2013-213-2018. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will introduce our city attorney, Ryan Jones, and I'll pipe in as necessary.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, on August 15th, the council took action to originally pass the moratorium related to tobacco establishments. So, it's specifically tobacco retailing businesses, smoke shops, or hookah or vapor lounges within the city of Clear Lake. So, that, that moratorium went into place about 45 days ago. Per state law, it only goes for 45 days unless the council wants to take action to extend it. Staff is recommending that we do, do that initial extension and go up for 10 months and 15 days. Per state code, we'd recommend that you go ahead and pass that resolution for that amount. In the meantime, we're continuing to research what the impacts are of these types of businesses and where they should be located to, and we, the plan is to permanently address this through our zoning code update, which is, which is pending. So, that is my report. This does require a four-fifths vote to pass. And we'd be looking for the council to adopt ordinance 213-2018. If there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Anybody have any questions or comments? Seeing none, opening it up to the public. Anyone wish to come up to the podium and speak on this item? And I will bring it back to the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to adopt the extension of moratorium, ordinance number 213-2018.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Mayor Harris and a second by Councilmember Kramer. Since it's just an extension, I think I can just do, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?
No, it's an ordinance.
Oh, it is an ordinance. I'm so sorry. Well, it seemed like we were all there, but let's just go ahead and do a roll call anyways.
Councilmember Overton?
Aye.
Councilmember Bennett?
Aye.
Councilmember Kramer?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
And Mayor Sabatier?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number 15. And actually, if we can take, do you still need a two-minute break? If we could just pause, reflect. And so, just to introduce it, we are looking at a consideration of police department designation as a 911 primary public safety answering point, a PSAP. And so, we're getting everything prepared for the presentation, which will occur in approximately two minutes.
We're ready to go.
And we're going to wait for Councilmember Overton to come back. She really took that two-minute break to heart.
Do you want me to turn that light off there, John?
I think I know where you got that picture.
Somebody told me they had never seen a police car that old at the event.
We're all back. So, go ahead and resume. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and the public. I am here tonight to talk to you about seeking approval for us to apply to become a public safety answering point. By way of background, the Clear Lake Police Department is responsible for providing law enforcement to 10 square miles, about 15,000 residents, and we operate a 24/7 dispatch center. That dispatch center is responsible for dispatching emergency and non-emergency calls for service. Just some information on 911. Back in 1973, there was a law passed called the Warren 911 Emergency Assistance Act, which established funding for the 911 system and also established shortly thereafter, they, they established that 911 would be the primary emergency number for individuals to dial across the United States. Some of the basic features that are included in a 911 system are what we call ANI, Automatic Number Information, which is similar to caller ID on your phone. There's also a piece of information called Automatic Location Information, which gives information on where the caller is calling from, as well as who are the responsible emergency agencies for that particular area. As 911 has evolved, there's been advancements, including querying real-time where callers are at from cell phones, which don't necessarily have an associated physical address. They could be out in a large parcel, out hiking somewhere, et cetera, or they could be changing a location. Currently, to look at routing for 911 calls, when you call from within the jurisdiction of the city of Clear Lake, your 911 call is automatically routed to the sheriff's office. At that point in time, a phone has to ring, a dispatcher has to answer that call. They need to make the determination that the call came from the city of Clear Lake. And then, they make a determination about whether it's a law enforcement call, a fire call, or both. If it's a, a police call, or it's both, they need to make sure that that call gets routed to the Clear Lake Police Department. So, they then transfer that call across a non-911 line to our dispatch center. When they do that, we lose all the call information. So, basically, we rely upon the dispatcher verbally telling our dispatcher where the person is calling from and what the situation is. They then take over the call, ask some of the same information that was asked before, and then they route a call. If the call is for fire, then the county routes that call to the Cal Fire Emergency Communications Center in St. Helena. There are several problems with this. The first one is that it delays every single 911 call that originates within the city of Clear Lake. That is because the sheriff's office is not responsible for dispatching police, fire, or medical responses within the city of Clear Lake. As I mentioned before, the, the call has to ring through. Somebody has to answer it. They then have to transfer the call, wait for it to ring some more, and then talk more. You can imagine that when you dial 911, for most people, time seems like forever then. So, any delay, even if it's just a few seconds, seems like a long time. And the reality is, with staffing considerations and everything else, it can result in measurable delays. The other part that happens is that when that call is transferred, we get what we call degraded service. So, the E-911 system was designed that when calls are made through, we get certain advanced information. I mentioned before, alley information and ante information, so that we know where somebody's calling from. The other part is with wireless callers, that we can in real-time interrogate that call and ask for updated information if we have the computer system. Unfortunately, when the call comes to us, we don't have access to any of that information. So, the information is degraded. We're also unable to utilize advanced features of the 911 system, including things that were designed to help the disabled, such as the TDD system for communicating with deaf callers. We also are unable to accept text to 911, which is a new evolution in 911, as well as any future things like telematics, which would be like your vehicle crashes. They're working on next-gen 911 where information about the number of people in a vehicle, et cetera, would be transferred to the dispatcher and help in the response. The other problem is that we don't have disaster resiliency. We saw, obviously, with the most recent fires, just prior to that, the Lake County PSAP had issues with their phone system connections. And then, during the incident, which was sustained, you know, the, the brunt of it for over a week, they were inundated with calls, had a lack of staffing. And our way of assisting was we had to physically relocate dispatchers from here up into the center, up there. We couldn't take our own load of 911 calls because we are not designated as a PSAP. I reached out in August to the California 911 branch, who is part of the Governor's Office of Emergency Services, and talked to them about our issues and explored the possibility of establishing a PSAP. We had numerous discussions, also discussed internally with the city manager and other city staff. Through those discussions, the states indicated that the city of Clear Lake could in fact become a PSAP and join a regional 911 system. The proposed system would provide redundancies for all of our 911 callers, in that one of the trunks would terminate in Lake County, the other one would terminate in Mendocino County, and then come across through a computer connection to us. So, if either one went down, the other one would take over. The most important part of this is that we would regain the tax money that's collected or the fee on phones, the 911 fee, and that would be utilized to provide all the equipment that's necessary to get this started. And then, also too, on an ongoing basis, it can also fund things like the furniture that's in the dispatch center that we need to provide for the dispatchers to do their job. So, there are some requirements for this. In order to move forward, I would need you to authorize me to write a letter to the state formalizing our request, and also too, committing that for a term of five years upon approval, we would staff our PSAP for 24/7 for at least five years. We'd answer 95% of 911 calls within 15 seconds. We would answer wireless and landline calls. We would also answer text to 911 calls and then ultimately support next-generation 911 services. The timeline to implement, once we got approval from the state, would be about four to six months. AT&amp;T has already been on-site to do a site survey to determine what we would need, and that's how they've specced it out and so that the state can make a preliminary decision to get us to the point that we're at today. The call flow would look something like this, where you dial 911, you would come straight to our dispatch center here. They could then make a determination to immediately send police resources, or they could transfer the call to the fire department dispatch center, and then they could send out units. The flow here is very important because in cases where there's a dual response, we can immediately get police resources going, and then the fire department could follow up, and we would stay in contact. Right now, there's kind of a break, so we don't necessarily know what's going on within those calls. A personal example is the fire that was right next to my house. I had no idea was going on, and I had a police radio on. And those are things that we should know within our community about what is happening. I did reach out as part of this process to the Lake County Fire Protection District because I, we have been working very closely with them on weed abatement and other issues. And I would just like to read very briefly the letter from Chief Sapata. It says, "On behalf of the Lake County Fire Protection District, this letter, or this serves as a letter of support for your pursuit to seek public safety answering point within the lake operational area. The LCFPD supports any positive enhancement and potentially redundant systems to achieve an effective, efficient, and sustainable operable communications infrastructure. Following the past several years of devastating wildfires resulting in over 2,500 structures lost, 63% of Lake County landmass loss, and at times 75% of the Lake County population, it clearly identifies the need to have these systems in place to ensure the safety of our personnel and the communities we serve as emergency responders. If there's anything LCFPD can do to assist you in your process, please feel free to contact me." They have also socialized with this with all the fire chiefs, and they've actually asked for us to explore the possibility of becoming the alternate answering point if their dispatch center in St. Helena were to go down like an earthquake situation, something major, where we lost communication over the mountains. So, certainly opportunities to look forward. We would also explore opportunities to assist the sheriff's office in any way that we can to maintain a resiliency of 911 within the county. There would be an additional workload on dispatchers due to the increased fire and medical-only 911 calls. We estimate that to be, it could be upwards of 11 calls per day. It just kind of depends. It's hard to get the numbers right now because of the way the current 911 system is configured. We are currently allotted five and a half full-time equivalent dispatchers and one full-time equivalent supervisor. We supplement this on a per diem basis with the CSO and officers who are cross-trained to dispatch. It would be anticipated that authorized staffing would need to be increased by one FTE dispatcher at least through a future budget revision request. We're not asking for that at this time. We would evaluate the call load. But in full disclosure, we want to make sure everybody knows what we potentially could be signing on for here. The staff recommendation is to authorize me to apply to the 911 branch to establish a PSAP at the Clear Lake Police Department. Just for numbers, the estimated cost to the city of doing this, we estimate somewhere around $8,000 for costs that may not be covered through the, the state funding. This would be the E-911 interface to our CAD system. It may very well be covered, but at this point, we're being more cautious that it wouldn't be. And then, there's an estimate that it could be up to $92,000 for an additional dispatcher, that salary and benefits. Again, we're not asking for approval for that at this point. We just want to give you the order of magnitude, and I'll answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your report, Councilmember Overton.
So, you say you're not asking for us for any approval on that, but where do you anticipate that money is going to be able to fall into when we need that extra dispatcher if we do this?
Where would the money go?
Where would the money come from for this other employee that we're going to probably have to get at some point in time if we do this?
It would be a general fund expense for the additional dispatcher, and that's why I said that it would be handled through the budget request process. So, we'd analyze that along with all of our other metrics for the police department and then make a formal request.
And what's going to happen if you're, if we don't have the funding for that?
So, if we can't manage our call load, then my recommendation would be that we need to explore options because we can't continue doing what we're doing today. It poses a risk to the public. It's not the way the 911 system was designed. And so, we either become a full dispatch center, or we'd have to find somebody to take on that responsibility and dispatch. But I don't believe that we can continue doing it the way that we're doing today, at least in terms of 911 calls.
I mean, I totally agree. I think this has been a, something's been a kind of a pet peeve of mine ever since I've been on council that our system is, that we have to wait for somebody to give us our, our information, and then we don't really have all the information that I think is necessary. And I think it has definitely been detrimental to our community. I'm just curious of who's going to get cut where if necessary, so...
Yeah, and I think that, you know, at this point, I'm not, wouldn't be asking to cut something. So, I think we would have to closely analyze and look at revenues and see where we're at. We've been very kind of out-of-the-box thinking in terms of cross-training people to help fill in on the gaps. I just think that in looking at the call load in there, looking at recruitment and retention, and the morale within the employees in there and, and what they're doing, that we have to keep in mind that that's going to be an area where we're going to end up needing to expand. You know, whether we can afford to do that now or later, you know, it, we would have to look at that. But again, we're not asking for it at this point, and I'm not saying that we're going to absolutely have to cut something in order to do that.
I just know that they're already, like you said, they're already overworked. And, and it's not that I don't want this for sure. I just was hoping that maybe we would have already looked to say, this is where the money's going to come from for this, this personnel, because that's a lot of money in a year for personnel. So, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Kramer.
Yes. Chief, did you mention some fees that might be associated with taking this over? I heard you say that, but I wasn't sure.
Yeah, so what will happen is that the state will provide the funding for the, they call it a turnkey system. So, all the equipment, it's about somewhere around $150,000. And then, on an ongoing basis, they pay all the monthly fees for the connections, which I think are in the realm of a couple of thousand per month for the, the lines that they use. And then, on an ongoing basis, it's a five-year cycle. They give you money to replace based upon your call volume, et cetera. They do not provide salary money, so you can't use it for salaries. It's very specific on what kind of equipment that you can use it on. But an area where we're already spending a pretty significant amount of money that it could help would be like the furniture, for example. And there are some other areas within dispatch.
Vice Mayor Harris?
So, based off of, that was a very eloquent description as to how it would unfold, and it sounds like something that's absolutely necessary with the delay. I know the, the delay is a big deal, and just like you said, everything's slowed down when you're in that situation. I guess my question would be about the, the financial aspect of it. I know that's going to be the key, the key point here. Is there a possibility that we could seek some assistance from the fire department as a potential co-mingle funding source for a dispatcher?
So, I think if we explored becoming their alternate answering point, it's certainly something that we could discuss with that. You know, you, it's also unknown too what the future may bring in terms of what their dispatching choice is.
And then, I guess the other thing would be that as you're discussing the fees being paid by the state for being declared a PSAP, some of those fees are essentially covering costs that we currently incur. So, those connection fees, I assume that all the associated things, including phone lines, that sort of thing, and the hardware that's necessary for the dispatch that we currently dispatch, you know, the, those savings in general could contribute to potentially the salary needs.
There would be some impact to it. Our current setup is, is not much better than probably what you have at your house for your phone. If you have a landline, that's essentially what we have.
It's frightening that you're, that you're saying that's frightening to me.
But, but you may recall, I believe it was last year or the year before, we spent $67,000 on a dispatch console, and that would be one of the things, I believe, that would be covered through this.
Yeah, so I mean, that's kind of what I'm mentioning, is that we wouldn't be paying, spending another $67,000 to upgrade something in the future. So, that's kind of a, a way of looking at that, is kind of insulating us from costs. And they, they cover all the upgrading and everything from then on. I know there's a, how would you say, $150,000, $180,000? I know there's a, how would you say, $150,000, $180,000 setup, the turnkey operation, right?
They do it based upon a call volume analysis, so it's hard to predict. The other part too, that I just want to throw out is the FTE calculations, obviously with working with the city manager and finance. I'm giving you a worst-case scenario of how much a dispatcher would cost. The reality is, we're funded a half-time dispatcher right now, so we may fill that full-time position with two half-timers because of availability. Some people don't want full-time jobs. We've had inquiries for part-time dispatchers, and for us, that may be a better way to cover kind of the peak times.
Gotcha.
So we would look at all that, but I, I didn't want to give you the low end and then come back and tell you something that's a lot higher.
You're, you're shooting for worst-case scenarios, so that we're not shocked and awed by the situation. All right, thank you so much for your answers.
Welcome. Councilmember Bennett.
This is long overdue. You mentioned about information being lost when 911 goes to county and then transferred to here. We've had major cases ranging from homicide to messy violence, whatever, where that initial information has been lost, and that is critical oftentimes to a successful investigation and/or conviction. This is long overdue. I think it's a, it's a win-win situation. There are going to be actually minimal cost associated with it, looking at the overall picture, and, you know, down the line, we're going to, we're going to be needing another dispatcher anyway. I like your idea of the two half-times, but as our, as our city grows, our call for services will grow, and that other dispatcher is going to be coming in soon, so, that's fine. It's way overdue.
Thank you. Councilmember Kramer.
Yeah, you'd mentioned the $2,000 a month. Is that something that we're not getting now? And any, I mean, is that additional revenue?
It's not, so the state pays for it, or the state will pay for it directly? It's not a cost that we're incurring right now because we're using, I mean, we're, we're using like your home phone line versus like a commercial-grade fiber optic is an easy comparison?
So even though it's not covering salaries, it's offsetting a part of that, that worst-case?
I think what it's, what it is offsetting is the, what the city manager mentioned about like furniture, kind of plant equipment type stuff, and certainly from the phone perspective, I mean, our phone system needs to be upgraded anyways, so it will offset that cost that we otherwise would be encountering, and there are other things that it can pay for along the way, so there's definitely some offsetting of things.
I would, I would join Councilmember Bennett in saying that this is long overdue. I was on the fire board when they were trying to work through the county system, and they moved because it didn't provide the services they needed, and I could see this being the same thing, so I strongly support this, this move.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Just to, just to put it in a quick synopsis and term here, would you say that this is necessary to promote our goal for a safer community?
Absolutely.
All right. So I, I thought that was more. Oh, let's open it up to the public.
I didn't want you to forget.
Well, on behalf of the customer out there, I want to say, I would much rather dial 911, and I think a lot of people don't know the regular number, but if I'm trying to dial the regular number, I have to go find it. So if I have somebody that's on the outside of my house and I'm trying to look up a number, I don't want to turn on the light to find you. So this would be certainly a better safety component for me, and certainly what most people think as the normal way to go. So I have gone through the route enough times that having a direct number to you that we all know would certainly make us feel safer and provide much faster service to us. I also looked at your efficiencies, and you are going to capture efficiencies because you're not, you're going to have that data up there, so what you now have to script out, even if it's a minute and a half each call, which it isn't, it's more than that when you're dealing with people on the public, trying to give you information and know it's accurate, I think you're going to capture efficiency in your process. My question is, are there funds that we provide to the sheriff's department, or the county provides to the sheriff's department, to have this central dispatch for us that maybe has an offset that we could go after as well? So I'm all for it, thank you very much. Oh, one more thing. And does this give you more tracking of all the calls, having run 24-hour operations? I was able to go back in and always listen to any call at any time, and is, I don't know if you have that capacity now, but is that going to give you that, a better access to having that information? Because I do get complaints, and even as much as this week, oh, I called dispatch and nobody came.
Yes, so we currently record all the calls, but in terms of information, this does include a system called ECATs where we can pull up very detailed information on like what our performance is, how we're doing with ring times, et cetera, and that's something that when we look at personnel, that we would look at to see is how are our ring times doing? Are we meeting the standard? What number are we at, just like we look at response times for police officers in the field? And now we don't really have that information with our current phone system. The other part is the state can also monitor that information, and that's again too, is as they see call volumes increase, they will increase the funding because they have formulas to figure out how much we should have. In terms of offsetting revenue, there's no revenue that, or no expense that I'm aware of that we pay the sheriff's office to do the service currently right now. They do receive the 911 funding for the equipment, but that's it.
Well, and I'm glad to hear this, it's going to offer you some tracking opportunity too. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Russ Product, City Clear Lake, I strongly recommend a yes vote on this item. I commend the chief for bringing it to you. Some history that you may care to know also is, after September 11th, Lake County went to a PSAP system, and it was encouraged, Chief Chalk, to do that then. He chose not to. Chief McLean chose not to. Chief Clausen chose not to, and interim Chief Selly chose not to. I spoke to those gentlemen before I sat on this council. This is, this would bring us to the technology to the current age. It's long overdue, and it also ties us in, should there be a catastrophic event in Lakeport that would cause the main sheriff's office system to go down, they can roll their 911 calls over to us, we can pick that up, we can share personnel. Again, this is just a no-brainer. I believe there's also a link to Mendocino County, should there be a 911 outage, as we've experienced in the past. This will keep our community safer, but also our outlying communities. Please vote yes on this. We need it.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? I'm going to bring it back. Do we have any more questions or comments?
I believe you had a comment before we go any further.
I'll go with Councilmember Kramer, but thank you for reminding me.
I'll head with your comment, I'm just going to go with action.
Okay, I have a quick question. So the information now, instead of having to transcribe it from phone to phone and have the right information, it'll pop up automatically through the system with all the right information. Does that information have the ability to automatically be sent to our officers' laptops?
So yeah, that's the CAD interface that was mentioned, that could be a city-born cost, but yes, what would happen is that as soon as the phone rings and the dispatcher brings up the call entry screen, that data pre-populates, so then all the dispatcher's doing is confirming the information. The other part too is, as the caller's location may change, they can do something called rebidding, which they can't even do manually right now, even with voice, so they can keep pressing the button and get updates as their location changes, particularly maybe somebody couldn't speak, they could get that updated information. So yes, it will pass all the way out to the frontline officers about where the call came from.
Right, right, and thank you very much for that. That's what I was hoping for, and I think that the cost is, when we're looking at the future cost, potential future cost, is absolutely minimal. I think that we've been playing our cards really, really well to ensure that revenue keeps increasing year by year. We have two brand-new national stores that came to Clear Lake. I am expecting to see that increase our revenues through sales tax. We've approved five different commercial cannabis businesses as they get their business in gear and going. I'm expecting to see a revenue increase from their sales tax and from the development agreements. I, I think that the total cost is nothing in comparison to, we are in the job as a police department to save lives and to offer safety to our residents, and I think that this is well worth every potential dollar that it might cost us for just one extra dispatcher to make this happen, and the, the potential starting fee is, is not even a, an issue. So I absolutely am in favor for this, and I'm looking for some action from the council.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we authorize the police chief to apply for the police department to become a PSAP.
Second? A motion by Councilmember Kramer and a second by Vice Mayor Harris, all in favor. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, Chief White.
Yeah, and if I can just say, you know, Chief White really took the, the ball on this one and carried it. He initially met resistance, he was persistent with it, and got them to this point, so I just want to thank Chief White for doing this.
Absolutely, absolutely. Don't take no for an answer. Moving on to item number 16, discussion on the number of council members appointed to ad hoc committees. Mr. Folsom.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to introduce Melissa Swanson, our city clerk, for this item.
Honorable mayor and council members, at the June 14th council meeting, Councilmember Overton asked for and received a consensus to bring forward a discussion on the number of council members appointed to ad hoc committees. At this time, the number of council members on the ad hoc committees has been the mayor's prerogative with the approval of the council and dependent on the type of committee. There's no set council policy at this time governing the appointment of ad hoc committee members. Typically, the mayor will appoint members with the consensus approval of the council. I sent a League of California Cities listserv question to other city clerks throughout the state, received responses regarding the three questions I asked, which are in the staff report. Does your city have a policy which dictates the number of council members allowed on an ad hoc committee? The second question is, how many members are allowed on an ad hoc committee? And does, the third question is, does the number vary? The majority of cities that responded allow up to one less than a quorum on an ad hoc committee. Most do not have policies on them, just following the Brown Act requirements. Some, such as Sacramento, which has a seven-member council and, and directly elected mayor, have written policies which give the determination and/or recommendation responsibility to the city manager with direct approval by the elected mayor. What we're asking for today is direction from the council of the preferred method of appointments to ad hoc committees. Do you want to form a formal policy, or do you want to continue as procedure has been in the past? If it is the consensus of the council to develop a written policy to add to the norms and procedures manual, we can bring that policy to a future meeting for formal adoption. That's what I have, and I can answer questions if you have them. Otherwise, we ask that you discuss it amongst yourselves for consensus.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Appreciate your report. Do we have any questions for our staff? Do we want to have a discussion and then open it up to the public, or open it up to the public first? Your choice?
I say discuss it.
Okay.
That way the public can talk.
So we were also given a few different cities with a graph, which I'm not seeing here. I know I saw it in my, there it is, back page, to describe if they had adopted a policy, if they had a specific number of council members on the ad hoc committee, or if, if varied. And so, thank you very much for all of that information as well. Seeing no pens, we're not having a discussion.
I'll start, so I'm the one that brought it up, I'll start.
Go for it.
So, so I, one of my problems is, there's, there are certain places where two council members on an ad hoc committee are okay, such as the marketing one, where there's nothing serious. My concern is, is when we have a resolution that we're pretty sure is going to come before us, when two council members sit on a committee, when it comes back here, it's already perceived to the council that two of them are going to say yes, and they only have to get one more. I don't think that's doing justice to our community. I think it shows to me that there's kind of a conflict there, and I'm uncomfortable with it, and I have been for some time. I just wanted to start bringing it up. Such things as the marijuana issue, I believe that one council member should have really been on that. I think anything that's going to come back to be a permanent law in our city should only have one council member on it. Things that are kind of basic, such as marketing, some of the smaller, I think that's just a discretion that the mayor and the, and the city manager can discuss and see how many on, but I really do believe that these things that we know are going to come back and we're going to create laws should only have one council on it. That's my opinion.
Anyone else? Councilmember Bennett.
I would generally agree with that. I would add one additional to, if it, if it involves a law or an ordinance, that if it concerns any appointments to the council or maybe to other, I think we're the only body that has the ability to make laws, but then I think just one, so, other than that, I don't have a problem with two.
Councilmember Kramer.
Perhaps one and an alternate, would that be?
It'd be standard anyways, wouldn't it? One and an alternate, would it be standard? Doesn't seem to be standard based on this list. Sometimes it says alternate, sometimes it does not.
If you throw in an alternate when it comes to doing resolutions, then basically you might as well just keep the two on the committee, because the alternate's going to end up going and basically being involved in everything anyway, so the point, what I'm trying to do is keep it from being basically already voted on, I mean, I hear this pretty much all the time when it comes to these issues like the marijuana, everybody already kind of knew how it was going to go, because, you know, you only have to get one more person on board, and it's pretty easy to do when you have three to pick from. So I'm just looking at these things that we know are going to come back to us and that we're going to create, you know, a resolution, a law for our people. I think they have, that we should, that they should have a better choice and more, more openness, and I feel like two council members sitting on those type of committees, I just don't think is right.
Vice Mayor Harris.
The only concern, obviously, I'd bring up with that is that making sure we have representation on these committees, and if we have just one person representing, they're, they're committing wholeheartedly to maintaining that schedule and making sure they're available for every one of those meetings, that may be an issue if those meetings are taking place in some cases. Some cases, those meetings are taking place in the middle of the day, and if we have a work schedule that conflicts, it may be an issue. So it's just something to think about. I just want to bring it up, play the devil's advocate here, but that's, if we don't have an alternate, then what do you do?
Well, I understand, but I'm going to guarantee you, there's going to be more than one meeting on these type of things that we're having, so I don't think that that could be, and there should always be somebody from the city at these meetings, whether it's the council member or the city manager, somebody that can bring back the information to the person that sits on that board, to make sure that they have that information. I mean, do you see that as a problem if that was, if, if there was a meeting that somebody couldn't, say we had the ad hoc marijuana committee and we only had one council and they couldn't make it, is there a problem that you think that would ever come up that they could not get the information out of that committee?
Not that they couldn't get the information, but they wouldn't be there to represent their point of view to the committee.
But they probably would at the next meeting. I, I can understand it if it was like the very last meeting that, you know, but I, I'm going to say on a general, that's not going to be an issue. I don't see where, and do just like we have to sometimes, you postpone the vote and you move on to the thing. The committee is just a recommendation, so the person who's going there, even if they're not there, I don't know why they couldn't send in their voice, their opinions on paper, people do that all the time. I do. I don't get, get to go to all the meetings I want to, but if I have something to say, I'll send my, you know, my response in and say, hey, I see this is on the agenda, I can't make it, but here's what I think, you know, on this, and then there's other things. I just don't think that, that it's that big. If it's, there's something that the committee's per se going to vote on, then they need to postpone it until everybody can be there, if that's what needs to happen. I mean, we do it if we have to. If we don't have enough council members, then on something that's serious, we say, hey, we want to carry it over because we want everybody there, just what we do. So we don't have alternates, and we make some pretty good decisions here, so I think an ad hoc committee, I, I think, yeah, and I think a committee isn't making the same serious decisions that we are.
Just to reiterate what I had stated before is that we, we have our meetings at five and six o'clock in the evening, so that's the big difference, is that some of these meetings, these ad hoc meetings are taking place out of the city even, at odd times, and that may be very difficult. Myself, it's not that difficult because I can make those times typically, but not everybody has that freedom of schedule, and everybody, including current council and future council members, may not be able to accommodate every time schedule, and that's where having somebody, a second person, an alternate or a second person, does come in very handy with that.
Well, I would say if you have an alternate, it would only be to go to the meetings when the other person cannot, and, you know, because I just don't, I still don't see where that's going to, I still disagree with it. I'll just put it that way, I still disagree with it.
Councilmember Bennett.
We have two cities. We have two cities on this list, Calistoga and Belmont, and their comments are yes, one or two, depending on a committee. I would suggest that maybe we could find out what their, well, they don't have, either one have an adopted policy. We can make our own policy. Again, I think if it's something that, the committee is something that may end up in the enacting of an ordinance, I think it's one. Because that way, it's not predetermined how at least two votes are going to go. Other committees, such as animal control, or probably most of the code enforcement, I think two is. I think we can easily make a determination as to what, what committees will have one, and what committees will have two. And I would recommend that staff bring us back recommendations. I would ask that they bring us back.
So, I'm going to bring a little bit of a different perspective. I think two of the biggest ad hoc committees that we've had in the past few years have been for the road tax, the garbage, and cannabis. And all of those required, as you just mentioned, Councilmember Overton, multiple meetings. So we're asking, wow, we're asking staff to come and meet multiple times for multiple hours at each time, including public members and council members. If we only allow one council member, my personal opinion is, we're giving a lot of power to that one council member, instead of allowing two of the council members that represent the people of this city to discuss and come back with unwasted material, where four people might say, no, this is horrible what you brought to us, versus two who have worked together with the ideas of what would be best for the city. Everyone here is, has a free will to say, yes, I agree with it, or no, I don't agree with it. But the fact is, I would hate to see us only have one council member and waste our staff's time and have to go back to the drawing boards, because the other four members or the other members said no. And I think that, that we need to make sure to keep the power separated. It takes five of us, sometimes four of us, depending on what we have to do to pass. Well, it takes all, all five of us to be here to make those decisions. And I would like to see us, without breaking the Brown Act, obviously, have two people so that, again, that can spread out the, and I also love the, the idea of balancing it out with two different perspectives of council members, which is what we bring already to this table. Each one of us brings a unique perspective, so that it's not obviously based on a specific agenda that those two council members are going for. And I think that what we've done in the past has proven and shown whether or not the public has had some issues with it. Our road tax is one of the most amazing things that's happening in our city right now. Our mandatory garbage is slowly and surely having an effect on our city right now. Seeing all the garbages, garbage cans outside proves to us that we're seeing less of that in our streets and more of that in our landfill. And the cannabis, the cannabis ordinances that we have already gone through and approved have also so far, except for the newest ones, because the businesses have not really started or begun, have proven that we have had an effective, positive effect on our community because of that. So I see no negative consequences of having two. I think it's a separation of power as well, to ensure that there's not one person who is going to be seen as the leader of the ad hoc committee. And I think that, I think it also makes sure that we don't waste our staff's time by ensuring that there's at least two individuals that may or may not agree with 100% of what is being, it's, it's about the compromise before it comes back to the council. And so they may still about want to be battling for change as it comes to the dais as well. But I think that the way that we've been doing it, two council members, is, is my personal preference, because of all that I said.
Okay, I want to argue this point, because the reason why I brought this up was because I've been getting the complaints from the community. So, one, everybody knew how everybody was going to vote the minute they came to us, because they already knew two was agreeing to it. Now they get three, one more, that's not a big deal. Doesn't matter what the whole council says. So the community perceives that it's already been decided. On every single one of those issues that you brought up, by the way, every single one of them, I got a call, that's the reason why I wanted it forward. Every single one of them, I got complaints from the community saying, we already knew how it was going to go, you got two council members bringing you back the decision. Now they have to get one more, that's not a big deal. So, I'm telling you, if our council member were saying to put on a committee, you don't feel comfortable that you have to have somebody else, first off, we have a problem. Our staff's going to be there no matter what. We're not wasting their time. So if our, one council member that you put on that committee, that we all agree to put on that committee, and our staff can't make a decision good enough to bring back to the council, or an idea good enough to bring back to the council, then we have a problem with the council member and our staff. So I don't think I need two council members and my staff wasting, you know, that, now, now you got a bunch of people going to that meeting to bring me back some information. I think one council member and my staff should be able to do that. And if they can't, then I think the city has a problem, as, as being able to not have sufficient people going to those committees. I don't think I need two people going and arguing our point, or discussing what the information is. That's why you put one council member. Most of them are only one. If you go out to all these meetings, you don't have two different department people coming to all these meetings, otherwise, nobody would be working. You know, you send a person, you send a, a committee member, that should be good enough. That's my opinion, and I think that's the way it is. I feel like every time it's come back, I've gotten complaints about everybody already knew how it was, and I did too. I have to say, I did too. I knew exactly how the vote was going to go, without me even voting.
And just to let you know, every single item on this agenda, any one of us could have chosen to talk to one of our, our other colleagues on this dais, in order to talk about how we're going to vote without breaking the Brown Act, by talking to more than one of us. And that means that we already have the two votes for something that we know we agree on, and so what's the difference between that every single time we're here in a meeting, versus an ad hoc committee where it's more of an open discussion with others, the public, and the staff? Because if we're going to be coming back and wasting our, our staff's time because one person agreed and the rest don't, then let's just let staff come up with the ordinances on their own and bring it to us for us to elaborate on, rather than doing this whole ad hoc committee thing. Because it takes a lot of time for the ad hoc committee. I think they're valuable. I think we get the public's input in there before it comes to the dais, and we have good positive conversations. But with one, I think it's, I think it's not enough.
Councilmember Bennett?
My last comment. I think generally, the ad hoc committees have worked out excellent. But one glaring example was when Councilmember Perdok stepped down, and there were applications to fill that seat, which Councilmember Kramer ended up doing. We had two council members on that ad hoc committee sifting through the applications, and how many apps came to us? Two? We ended up putting it out for all, six, I believe, applied. And out of that six, I think, three or four showed up. Again, that's one of the, I don't mind having two, but if it's something as important as a appointment to the council, a law to be, issue to be made into a city ordinance, I think if you have two on there, it's pretty much predetermined what's going to happen. Because if I'm not on that ad hoc committee, I'm going to be out of the loop until it comes before us.
But I'd like to interrupt. The actual opposite act happened that time.
What, what time?
The decision made by the ad hoc committee was reversed by the council.
But it had to be reversed. It shouldn't have been that way.
But, but I'm just saying that it, it didn't, if it was, if it was obvious what the decision was going to be, the decision actually wasn't the decision that was made. Therefore, the council has the power to still overstep, and I like what I'm reading right here, which is no more than one less than a quorum, when we only have four, and we have two people on the ad hoc committee, then at that point, that doesn't make sense for something like appointing a person into a position, where now it's two versus two, and that does create a problem. And so for those types of positions, I would say, yes, one less than the quorum should have been one person.
But to go back to Councilwoman Overton's statement is perception. And there were people in the community that have, there are people in the community that may well have the perception that it's a done deal. And we need to get rid of that perception. That's the only one that I've come up against, since I've sat on this council for almost two years, to be honest. But if she's received other info, and, and what I'm talking about was a glaring one. Not that there was anything underhanded, I'm not saying that. Please don't misunderstand me. But the perception was that it's a done deal. I know it came to council, we had a good, open, wholesome discussion, and come to resolution. But we need to, to watch out for that perception and be fully transparent. So there are times to have the two, there are times to have one, in my humble opinion.
Councilmember Kramer?
At one time, of course, affected me, so I'm not going to talk about that. But I do think that there are times when two council members on a committee can actually be a benefit, and especially if you have a balance of ideas that are, that are brought forward. And I bring up the ad hoc committee, you know, my perceptions are, are not the same as yours a lot of times, and I think we balance well in that case. And that's going to come before us as an ordinance, or a zoning change at some point in time, possibly. So I think, I guess I have to agree with, with Councilman Bennett on that, that I think there are times when two is okay, but I think we need to use a lot of discretion on, on determining when those times are. I don't think that's going to, I don't think we can do that with a hard and fast ruling here, but I think it's, it's going to require discretion, and I think there are times when, when two is better than one, and there are times when definitely there shouldn't be two. I, I don't think we can make it a hard rule. I think we've got to use discretion on each case, but obviously, there can never be more than two.
Vice Mayor Harris?
I'm going to reiterate exactly what he just said. I feel exactly the same way. I think there's some instances where it would be more advantageous to have two, for the representation, or the communication, or through being able to attend. And then, there are some cases like that particular case, and I feel the same way about that particular scenario, where one would have been better in that particular scenario. So I think it's a case-by-case basis, and I think it should be at the discretion, to the discretion of the council as a whole. So if each, each appointment to an ad hoc become, comes before the five of us council members, I think we can make a determination as to whether or not that requires one or two. And I think that, that we could have faith in ourselves, the five of us, to make a decision like that.
Councilmember Overton?
And I am in agreement, like I said. I, I mean, I just bring this up, because I was just getting way too much over the, over this past year with the different committees, and I just felt like it was time for a discussion on when we felt like, with this here. I do like what some of them say, and maybe it should just be, you know, whether we wanted to say, but like you said, less than the forum, and depending on the committee when it comes back. So I guess that really isn't, do we need to, per se, put a policy in place? I don't know if that's really what we have to do, but put to, just to reiterate that that's our thought, on making sure that we never have, you know, that we have the one less than a quorum, and depending on the committee, whether we have one or two.
Well, I think the direction that we, that, at least that I'm hearing from this, is that when we put together an ad hoc committee, that that be one of the things, when you appoint people, you decide, are we going to go with one, are we going to go with two, and it be a conscious decision that you all make.
And how many are going to be on the ad hoc committee?
That's kind of the policy, is that.
And that's kind of what we've been doing anyways, because we have an open discussion. Do we want seven members? Do we want nine members? Who's going to be the members? And then we just say if, if there's going to be two council members, or one council member. So we've already had those discussions. But I do think that unless already created, typically if we go down a council member and we end up with four, we try to appoint one as quickly as possible, but that if there's a new committee created, that no more, one less than a quorum, so that it's not a two-to-two situation, so that we end up in a gridlock, or where it's obvious that we're, we're most of the council.
Well, a quorum is always three. Okay? So even if you only have four people on it, it's still three is the quorum.
Okay, well, I guess I, I meant.
Discretion.
Yeah. Two minus a quorum.
Now, the, excuse me, just to clarify one thing, I believe the, one item that we want, might want to bring back for discussion again is the norms and procedures, because I believe in that it talks about how to do appointments, doesn't it?
It talks about how to do appointments, yes.
Yeah, so that might be something, we'll bring that back for conversation.
I agree, I think that's, would be good. And I'm not saying what we've been doing is so bad, but there has been a couple of incidences that I've been uncomfortable with, and also, community members have been, and I just thought it was a discussion, so that people know we're not just trying to hide something. One, I just wanted to get it out there and get it over with, so that people know that we are talking about it. So it wasn't that I feel like necessarily we've done anything bad, I just felt like it really was a discussion we needed to have, so that, so we don't get ourselves into situations that we're, we're not wanting to be in, so.
Councilmember Bennett?
And lastly, I think that the important sentence in this staff report is, typically, the mayor will appoint members with the consensus approval of the council. And we in this community are so blessed that we have a council, may not always agree, but we do work together. And I think a consensus can be reached, and if something needs to be changed down the line, it can be changed. But I just think those things need to be kept in mind, where there may be conflicts. That's it, I'm done.
All right. I believe you have the direction you were looking for?
I think you need to open it up to the public.
Yes, thank you.
Oh, oh, yes. Hello, sorry. Yes. We are done with our discussion.
Okay, as a member of the public, I have to agree with Councilmember Overton. I do think that when you do go into ad hoc committees, there's a lot of who got on it, how did they get on it, what's the scope of it, what's the length of it? I mean, all of a sudden, I, I think that definition is really unclear to us, there's no public communication of it. I've seen you, especially on your big ad hoc committees, like the marijuana ad hoc committee, you brought it back to council for discussions on preliminary findings or directions, and that gave all of you an opportunity to discuss it in a public forum. So I think that some of what you have done with the measures you described, which have been successful, were not done privately and completely behind closed doors. So rather than thinking that you're going to get your full policy at one time from an ad hoc committee without public interaction, maybe a different way to think about it, such that rather than expecting the ad hoc committee to come to you fully with a proposal, you have that preliminary, here's where we're going direction, or here's where we're having conflict, where not only you can put in your comments, but the general public who's paying attention can put in those comments. I also don't see that there's clear timeframes of what is the ad hoc committee going to do, and when does it end? And that really kind of bothers me. It's like, well, who are these people? And they seem to be regularly, the similar people in what my perception is. That could be wrong, or, but it is a feeling that I have to go and agree with Councilman Overton. I do think there's a lot of unclarity, and I would say, not, you guys have been great. I've been coming for years, and as a council, you debate, you discuss, we have an opportunity, and I think it's really been working well, under many of you as mayors. But I do think you need to be thinking about the ad hoc committees, when they're best used, what's their limitations, what's their timeframe? Because they're, they're not like the planning commission, that they're a board that's ongoing. I don't see that. And I know that it seems like you're using it that way, and I would caution you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this item? I will bring it back, and Vice Mayor Harris?
So, unless I'm mistaken, be it not convenient, maybe, if there's not enough room, but ad hoc. hoc committee meetings are always open to the public, I've never seen them completely...
Not necessarily, no. They're not Brown Act meetings, so we don't, we don't publish them, it's primarily to get input from certain people, the planning commission, whoever, whoever's appointed, they're appointed for that specific reason.
Right, I'm not talking about to participate in the meeting, but to sit in and listen. I mean, I've had multiple people sit in and listen during our ad hoc...
We typically do that, but we don't necessarily advertise the meeting.
Right, well, that's what I'm asking, the, the question I'm asking is essentially, if we're looking for, based off of her comment, if we're looking for transparency in general, I have no problem personally with encouraging the public to come and sit in and listen to our ad hoc committee meetings, and they could sit in quietly, obviously they're not allowed to communicate during the meetings, but they could sure sit in and listen to the meetings, I would have, I personally would have no issue with that. And furthermore, I, I don't even see a reason why we couldn't post a calendar that shows when the meetings are being held and where, and if people feel like they want to participate in a way of understanding what is transpiring at the meeting, so they can build an opinion of their own based off of the communication, I'm very open to the idea of transparency in its fullest degree, and if that's not an issue, then I don't see any reason why we wouldn't move forward with something that would be a, an, a sort of an invitation for people to sit in and listen in during those sort of meetings. I'm just bringing it up. Spitballing that one.
Councilmember Kramer?
Yeah, I, Cheryl, you used the ad, the marijuana ad hoc committee meetings as an example. When that committee was set up, it was set up balanced, I felt, with folks that were concerned about too much, or about, about marijuana, and, and really were not totally for it, and we had others that were, were really for it. So it was a balanced, it was a balanced committee, and I think it still is. At the beginning of that committee, though, we did have, I think we lost control a little bit, and we're having folks that were not on the committee, that were up, talking, and, you know, and it became a, it was almost like, as I described it, herding cats. And I think we've gotten control of that now, and I, like Councilmember Harris, I don't have any problem with people sitting in the audience, listening, and perhaps adding to it to, to different committee members outside the actual discussion. I think the discussion needs to be limited to the committee members. And those decisions on that ad hoc committee at least, go to the planning commission before they, usually before they come to, to the council. So there's, there is a couple more steps in there that protect, I guess, and make sure that the decisions that are, the recommendations that are being made are, are really looked at by, by two different groups of, of, of people. So that was my, my comments on that.
Councilmember Overton?
So the reason why ad hoc committees were created was because, not for public input, by the way, the reason why they're there is to, to come together and try to form something to, to bring out all the details, and get rid of all the kind of nasty stuff that we don't really need to deal with. If you start opening it up to the public, you might as well just have it at a meeting. I mean, why are we having an ad hoc committee then at all, if we're going to let the public come in and, and, and do anything? Very strict because of the way that these meetings get carried away when you let the public speak, and on many of them, and when you let them speak, then, then you, you get the turmoil of the, the public, of speaking during something that you're supposed to do. I think if you're going to let the public speak, they should be asked to come to the meeting, and, and if they want to speak, then they should actually be put on the agenda to speak at the, at the meeting. And I know you guys are going to say, oh, that's not true, but it is, because we all know that has happened at these meetings that we've even had over the last couple of years, where things got carried away, and, because we're letting the public speak. That's why we have council meetings. Ad hoc committees are for us to appoint the people that we want to go through things, and, and, and get through all the, the detail stuff, and come back to the public meeting where the public can put their input in. So I'm not necessarily totally against the public commenting, but I think you've really got to keep a handle on it, a very, very tight handle on it, and, and cannot, and when it's really desperate issues, like the marijuana thing, we all know how those got carried away, so it was all, everybody knew how they got carried away because we were letting public people speak. So I think depending on the committee, also another thing, that depending on the committee, you have to be very careful about letting the public speak at those ad hoc committees. I'm not saying it's not necessarily totally abandon it, but I think you've got to be very careful about it.
So I'm going to say that I agree with, with Councilmember Overton was saying. I think that when we come together as an ad hoc committee, it's not a simple issue that we're tackling, or else we wouldn't have to have an ad hoc committee to really look at the data, look at where we want to go, and how we're going to get there. I think we're spitballing ideas that some might be absolutely absurd, and that we need to create the safe space for those who are members of the ad hoc committee to be able to offer suggestion, offer ideas, so that eventually we can squash out the ones that really won't work, and really highlight the ones that will work, and eventually bring that back to the council or the planning commission. I know that typically we have some people who bring either a friend or a, a family member that's along with them, maybe someone they're taking care of that ends up in a seat and stays quiet, that's worked out when it's a minimal amount of people. But I think that keeping a safe space for everybody to be able to have equal expression on the subject that we're trying to tackle is really important, because we have to be able to put everything on the table, and then just clean it off and keep the good stuff. And the more we open it up to the public, the more people become a little bit fearful of, of expressing themselves, because maybe they think what they're trying to say is ridiculous, which maybe it's the best idea that could have been put on the table. And I'd hate for us to start inviting the public for something that eventually does come to the public. I think there's a reason why we sit down and have the roundtable discussions, and it's not because we're trying to hide something, I think it's because we really want to hash out what's possible and what's going to work. So I think that we need to be weary of, of, of saying, let's allow the advertisement, or allow to open it up, because eventually it all has to go public. Nothing is made, voted on and decided on without offering public input and coming back to the council or planning commission.
Vice Mayor Harris?
I'd just like to reiterate again, I never once said to have anybody come and speak at an ad hoc meeting. I don't encourage that in any way, shape, or form. And what I did say is that some people come, and they sit quietly, and they listen to the goings-ons at these meetings, and I think that it's good for them if they feel like they need to understand what's happening. And, I mean, I think that that speaks to exactly your concerns that you said multiple constituents have brought to you, is that they felt like that things were happening inside of these secret meetings, and secret decisions were being made between two council members in these, these hidden ways, and quiet rooms, and that's not the case. And that, what I'm trying to reiterate here is that we are, when we were having these ad hoc meetings, we would be more than happy, I know personally, I'd be more than happy to have anybody who wants to listen in, listen in, to the meeting, so that there's full transparency. You would know exactly why things were discussed the way they were, why the decisions were, why the decisions were arrived at in the meetings, because the discussion was opened, and you could have been there to listen yourself. So that was the reason why I brought that up. I'm just a big believer in full transparency, and yes, when people start feeling like things are happening behind closed doors, that's because they are.
Minus the cigars. Councilmember Kramer?
Well, I was going to speak, but Councilmember Harris pretty well said what I was thinking. I, I didn't. I reiterated that I don't want people from the public speaking at the ad hoc committee meetings, but I have no problem with their listening, for the same reasons.
You got the, good directions? No speaking? Varied on how many council members?
Clear's mud?
Yeah, more or less.
So are we, do we have any action to take here, in any way, shape, or form?
Just direction to staff, I believe, is, yeah, discussion with a possible direction to staff.
A policy, policies and procedures to be bracked with, basically that's where this all goes to, is policies and procedures. Correct?
Uh, not necessarily all of them, some of them do.
Yeah, the appointment part, we'll be coming back and, and discussing with further, but for the...
I don't know if any of the other things are in the norms and procedures, at least as far as if you're, if you're talking about opening up ad hoc committee meetings to the public. I'm, I'm not necessarily advocating to do that. There's, there's, there's several different types of committees that you have, there's subcommittees, and then there's ad hoc committees. Subcommittees you have that are subject then to the Brown Act, where you do open it up to the public, where you give the public their opportunity to have, you know, time to speak.
Like the marketing committee?
Exactly, like the marketing committee, those types of committees that are ongoing, and ad hoc committees typically, they're formed to address an issue, they're for, you know, they're not designed to be ongoing, the, the marijuana has been going on much longer than we anticipated, just because we keep having new laws come into effect and new wrinkles with it, so we have to keep kind of going back at it and making tweaks. But as was said, you know, you, you do want people who are in that committee to be able to feel free to talk freely, and, which they don't always feel that way in, in the public venue. You can do what y'all want, but...
I think you just gave yourself good direction.
Committees are fine, ad hoc committees are not fine to be open to the public, that's just, I said, I, I think committees, like we have the ad hoc committee, that's fine, I mean, I mean, our, uh, marketing committee, I think is fine, I am, but like you said, the ad hoc committees are created for a purpose, and not, and not for public input, that's not where public input happens. So, public input happens when the ad hoc committee brings it back to the council.
I agree with you.
So it's pretty simple, so that's, that's, so, but I do think we need to look at our policies and procedures in that section.
So, no public invitation, no talking of the public, other than for a, not an ad hoc, but for the standing committee, or whatever the, you mentioned, the...
Marketing, or...
Standing committee.
Standing committees.
Standing committee. If we can review the appointment process as well, and then we're going to continue as, as is, where we discuss how we're going to create an ad hoc committee, when the possibility of creating a new ad hoc committee comes up, where we'll figure out who's on and who's off, which is what we've been doing in the past, and now we'll be a little bit more mindful about, um, public perception as we create those in the future.
Got it.
Awesome. To your report, Mr. Folsom.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple of things. Oh, let's see, last week we had a hearing on CDBG, Community Development and Block Grant, where we discussed several potential projects for a grant application. The, what's called Notice of Funding Availability should be coming out in the middle of October, will be coming back to council to discuss. Once we review that notice and see if there's any particulars to it, we'll be coming back to council to talk about some of the projects that were discussed at the public hearing, and then we'll be asking for some direction from council before we actually put a grant application together. I attended the monthly Lake County Economic Development Corporation Board meeting, there was a marketing committee meeting this week, I believe, last week. I had my monthly update call with the Lake County Chamber Board, talked a lot about our, all the road projects that we had going on, and people were very pleased to hear that over in Lakeport. We had a demonstration of some new onsite software for new, our financial software, what we're using is old, archaic, out of date, like a lot of the things that we do, we, we've, are really looking at our technologies, and looking at what we can do to bring in new technologies to help us to be a lot more efficient and effective. So you will be seeing us bringing these types of things forward in the near future. I attended a meeting with Councilmember Kramer in Lakeport for Visit California. Visit California is a statewide organization that promotes tourism within California. They primarily are looking to bring in people from out of state, from out of the country here to California. Due to the wildfires, they are focusing on Lake County and some of the other fire-affected counties, so they were here, there to tell us about what they're doing. They've been doing some promotions of our wine country, they've been doing promotions of our lake, so it's great to have them involved. We had a meeting this morning to discuss some community center improvements, we had a candidate's orientation today, and I want to announce that we have a new police officer, Shane, and help...
Addis.
Addis, who will be starting the week of October 8th. And then, is that a clap?
Yes.
Animal Control, Bow Wow Luau is this Saturday at the community center, and next week, Wednesday, we are having our Local Hazard Mitigation Plan public meeting. If people want to come out to a public meeting, they can come out on Wednesday, October 3rd, from 5:30 to 7:00, we'll be talking about our local hazard mitigation plan, which is how we're going to be dealing with, like if there was to be an earthquake, or future wildfires, or if, if Mount Canuckdie explodes, we'll be looking at what mitigations can be put in place so that those disasters aren't complete disasters, and that we address them somehow. It also helps us to get federal funding by having this plan. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Overton, your report, please.
Well, first off, I'd like to thank our chief for the wonderful desk that we have down at our senior center, it was too big for his office, so we were more than happy to get rid of all our garbage, desks that I've put together to make a desk, and it says, working out really well for us, and it has made it to where we can deplete several file cabinets, because the drawers are file drawers, it's a big difference in our office already, and we haven't even got finished, so thank you, thank you very much on that, I appreciate it. We had our annual Highlands Senior Center Dinner and Dance. Senator McGuire was nice enough to do an extra fund, fund me type of auction, I guess we'd call it, and raised $2,200 for us to put new equipment in at the community center. So I am trying to research to see who we can get to have do that, so that will help our community events when we have them there, be able to cook faster, and, and even better than what our stoves are always needing fixed, so something's always broke down there when we have a community event, so hopefully this will really help move our community events to being more sufficient with the food and temperatures. So I really appreciate it. I was one of the ones that participated in the meeting this morning with our city manager, going over where to put the bathrooms and stuff, but I'll let Russ talk about that. I want a special thank you to Phil Harris and Russ Perdak for helping the seniors at their event, because of you guys, I, we waste more money, and I really do appreciate the, and our seniors really appreciate you helping there, that was great. I wanted to say a special thank you to Carl Webb, because he's been here as long as I've been here, and, and sat on our planning commission, and was, especially at the beginning of, of my career as a council member, not knowing codes and, and all of that, he was really, you know, helped me learn a lot in the planning commission part, so I'm going to miss him a lot, but hopefully the other planning commissioners I can lean on when I need to, he's been great. Don't forget, we also have the Bow Wow, but there's also the Pear Festival, so don't forget, that helps our county here, thank you.
Councilwoman Overton, you've covered most of what I was going to say. I did attend the Visit California Tourism Symposium. The only thing I would have to add, and, and is that City Manager Folsom, when asked to comment on Clear Lake, because he got up and did a great job, in my opinion, of promoting Clear Lake, and what we've been doing. The audience was pretty appreciative of that, and gave him a pretty good ovation, was well, well deserved. This morning's, or, yeah, it was this morning's, community center visit was on the, on the subject of the emergency evacuation shelter. As most of you have know, have seen the big green piece of equipment sitting out, and the generator sitting outside, we've got that now, the wires are pulled from it to the transfer switch on October 13th, they're going to do the completion of the wiring on that, I know they've made arrangements with you to be able to shut down things for a four-hour period, I believe. And then the, we talked about the running, extending of both electric and communication wires out to the northwest corner of the parking lot, and bringing up a box, so in an emergency situation, trailers that come in, FEMA trailers, insurance trailers, lack trailers, whoever, come in, they can plug in there, get electricity, they can also get, have their communications. So rather than having wires strung all across the parking lot as, and, and the yard as it has been in the past, it'll be, be a short run for that, and I think much, much more organized. And then, the, the arrival of our portable restrooms are imminent, we need a place to park it, and so the next, we were talking about the next step, which would be the location of a storage building and, and... and shed overhang where we would park the restroom and potentially park trailers with emergency supplies, cots, bedding, whatever happens to be in those trailers and be able to secure it. So we're moving ever closer. We believe that the generator will be tested and powered up on, by the, around the 29th of October. So I'm really pleased to see that progress. We're very close to having our shelter ready for certification for if and when it's ever used. And hopefully it will never have to be used again, but it'll be there. So that's my report.
Thank you very much for all that work. Councilmember Bennett.
Good news for our city manager. Although Mount Canuckti is active, it will not blow. It's a bent volcano, so lava will just flow.
Good to know. Thank you.
You can rest easy.
We have the water between us and there, right?
So maybe it'll bring up some more Lake County diamonds. I have quite a collection up. We had an AVA meeting, the abandoned vehicle abatement meeting recently. DMV is collecting the monies from vehicle registrations, but it will not be dispersed until April, I believe, of next year. Alan?
That's my understanding right now, yeah.
So the county council made a update, gave us an update on that, referenced that. There's been a lot of correspondence going back and forth and so that's an update on that. Also, hopefully our next meeting, we will add a fifth board or a fifth committee member to that, which will be a citizen at large. And I was hoping we'd get it done the last meeting, but things take time with some people. Hunting season's over. It was a successful season. Thank you. I did.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Bennett. Vice Mayor Harris.
So I don't think we've given our reports since we all came back from, I was just going to mention that.
All September.
Did everybody forget that we had an event that lasted days? I had to see you people every day. I shall not soon forget that experience, but anyways, we... The information being provided through a bunch of breakout sessions and it was a great, good experience for me. And I did, like councilmember Overton described, I did participate in her event, which I thought was a lot of fun. It was a great event. In fact, I'll be at the Bow Wow Luau auctioning as well on Saturday. So if you can't get enough of my mouth, you can go there, listen to more.
Because you're so good.
I guess.
Because you're so good.
That's it. That's it. It's going to get, yeah, it was good, good meal, good stuff. Really do appreciate the fact that we can all sit up here and clearly not always agree on things, but I'm glad that we can always come to fruition on decisions, which is pretty neat, pretty neat stuff. It's always good to have a good communication and I actually look forward to the things that we do as a council. And where I would say that many times there might be a perception from our community that there's too much continuity, that that continuity is what's getting everything done. So that's my feelings on that. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. I know my list got longer when I looked at the calendar and realized also we haven't had a real meeting, a regular meeting for quite some time. So I want to start off first with state of the city. The state of the, the state of the city is our bragging rights. For everything that we have been doing over the past year. Big thanks to Greg Folsom for your presentation to get everyone to really believe, continue to believe that we're moving forward and that things are happening. Not only are they seeing it, but I think just the way that you presented, that they're feeling it and they're believing it and we need that. Also, we got to see a wonderful new video that was passed around then on the internet from Mr. Flora. Thank you for taking your time to create that. I think that, I mean, it's inspired ideas in my head of things also that we haven't been doing that we really should be doing. And there's so many possibilities. After that, we all went to the Senior Center fundraiser. If, when you see Phil and he's the auctioneer, his wife is the purchaser. And if you ever want to find out what a hoedown is, ask Phil. He'll even show you the dance move that goes along with it. After that, we all went to the League of Cities. What a place to go for inspiration. Meeting with all kinds of like minds, working on similar problems. We think we have such unique situations here in Clear Lake, but just about every city in the state of California is dealing with the same problems. Homelessness was huge. How to deal with the new cannabis laws is huge. And also there was a lot on two other subjects, the community choice, which is a way to replace your electrical company with a more local company, but still utilizing the PGAD power lines. That's something that I know in the county, there's work being looked into making this a reality or at least making it a discussion to see if that's something we want to move forward on. And the other item was Prop 6. And Prop 6 is going to be on the November ballot and it's going to be whether or not we want to continue SB 1 funds, which was the additional gas tax that was placed sometime last year, the beginning of the year, I think it was. And so a lot of cities have already, I believe they said there was 151 projects that are currently happening right now because of the SB 1. And those projects have the potential to be canceled based on Prop 6. So there was a lot of information to let us know how that would affect our cities. So League of Cities, wonderful. After that, just last week, we had the LAFCO meeting here in Clear Lake. One of the things that came out of that meeting we just discussed when I was recused, which was, did we pass that? I was not here.
I'm afraid so, sir.
Where now the city of Clear Lake is looking to be the financial oversight, I guess, is the, maybe not the right word. But we're going to be working with LAFCO, fiscal responsible party. Something like that. And so that was part of it. And then also in Kelseyville, there's, we're looking at a consolidation of, or doing an MSR on their water districts. So that's going to be coming up on the LAFCO as well. After that, same day, marketing committee, we discussed Walking Our City. We are looking at some really nice signs. We looked at aluminum signs. We're going to come back and discuss exactly what style of signs we're going to have next time. Basically, we're looking to give directions to people on how to get from place to place, but more to give directions especially to those who are walking our city. How far, how many minutes away are you from City Hall? How far away is the next shopping center? All with also access online to give you some directions that you can follow on your phone or your device. And so I'm excited about that prospect. If you're not aware, we also started our photo contest. Please go to our website for more information. Submit your photos. The photos we received last year at our photo contest were outstanding, amazing and gorgeous. And we're hoping to get the same quality photos this year. What we've done, and you haven't seen it yet, but they've been printed in the 3D printed format, where they will be shown in City Hall, in our senior center, senior community center and our visitor center to show off all this artwork that our community has provided for us. And so we'll be doing the same once this contest is over and providing more pictures to show off. Let's see what I've talked about here. This last Saturday, I had the privilege of having the Eighth Annual Power to the Youth. It was a smaller event than I typically put together. Unfortunately, the real event was postponed because of the fires. So I'm glad that we were able to still make it happen and get some of young, our young community members to take part. We had a skate park competition, which is always fun and exciting. We had a youth car show. I think we only had one classic car. The rest were all Hondas or Subarus. And you know what? That, I love seeing that. We also had a police department. Actually, we seem to have quite a large number of people showing up for the police department and I really appreciated them being out there. Our chief white was out there as well, meeting the public and always appreciate seeing them in part of our community events. Later on, an hour after actually, exactly, I changed from my Power to the Youth outfit to my typical Sue outfit that I have on. And I was the host over at the Democratic BBQ there. I think they said it was the 25th Annual Democratic BBQ. And I just want to highlight one specific moment. During that moment, it would appear that it started with Assemblywoman Aggie R. Curry, who had nominated our council member Joyce Overton for Woman of the Year to John Garamendi. And John Garamendi came by and was there, as well as Assemblywoman Aggie R. Curry, Mike Thompson. Congressman Mike Thompson also was there, showed up. And John Garamendi brought Joyce to the front and gave her a plaque and congratulated her for all the work that she does, not just on the council and her years of service, but also the work that she does at the senior center, working very hard to try and provide for those who have a need and are vulnerable in our population. So congratulations to Joyce for your well-deserved award. I think I'm almost done. And today I got to ride along with Chief White to Lakeport. We met with county officials from the special district to discuss some potential sites for a future animal control facility, just to open up our options and see what's the best thing that we can do as we move forward to have a more permanent facility and try to get away from our interim facility. So thank you very much. And I went with, also met with Mr. Flora up there as well. And I just want to say, look around. It's really easy to see right now that there's a lot going on. You do not have to look very hard. We have a brand new sign at the end of Lake Shore Drive and Highway 53 with our beautiful logo shining bright. It is an amazing change. We have new striping on our roads, which in a very strange way makes it look like we also repaved our roads. It's those little touches that really make a huge difference. We have a brand new road being, right now paved as we speak, not as we speak, but over the days, from Dam Road Extension to Phillips. That is an amazing project. I'm looking forward to that being completed. It probably will take a few more weeks to be complete. We have the road over on Country Club Extension and Kings Lane that's also being worked on. Pine Street just received the, a new paving as well and they're not complete yet, but it is looking really nice out there right now. And I really appreciate all the hard work and being seen, the work being seen visually. A lot of times we seem to approve of plans, approve of ordinances, but here we're seeing the visual change happening in our community. And I couldn't be more proud with what I'm seeing right now. I knew this fall would be messy with all the construction, but it's quite the opposite. It does not look chaotic. It actually looks gorgeous. So thank you to everybody and your hard work for making that happen, including our Public Works Department. And I'm going to leave it at this. And we have a redo from Vice Mayor Harris.
I don't do a lot of re-dos, but I'm going to do one today. So you know, I did one... See all the progression that's being made. And I think that the way that our city manager conveys that information is just impeccable. I mean, it's just beautiful. And I really appreciate the effort you put into that. I appreciate the response that we get from our community in general. I think that you're a key component to the success here and I say it all the time and I just really appreciate everything you do. But those are adults that you're talking to. So let me tell you something today. Today was career day at Pomos School. I don't really care too much. And I go, have you gotten any changes taking place in your community? And we're talking about first graders through fifth grade. And they're like, yeah, the... And they're reinvested and proud of our community. And that made me feel really good today to hear the response from those kids, you know? It's, it's, it's one thing to impress adults, but when you impress children with the things that we're doing, like spraying the streets, something's happening there. So I just appreciate everything the staff does as a whole. And I really appreciate the efforts, especially on the state of the city thing. That's beautiful. Thank you.
And I was just reminded, I need to put a thank you out there to Rotary for making the sign happen over at Lake Shore Drive and Highway 53. Rotary took on that project, brought it to the marketing committee. It was approved. It was brought to the council. And now we're seeing the end results of all that process. I want to also say thank you to Beth Keiman and PEG TV for always being here and putting us out there to the public to make sure that they're aware of what's going on. And thank you to John Jensen and Lakewood News as well. Appreciate you being in here and making sure everybody is up to speed. And it looks like he's hungry, so he wants to go eat dinner. So everybody, have a good night. Thank you so much.